Madam Secretary, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, Chair. Yes, Chairman, it has.
Thank you very much. Have a roll call, please.
Mr. Kandell, Ms. Larmen, Mr. Mueller, Mr. Shaw, Ms. Sataka, Mr. Velosen, Mr. Myers, I mean, Mr. Williams, Councilman Zabrowski, Chairman Tai, we have a quorum.
Very much. Memorialization of resolutions.
This evening, we have a few. First one is Masajif Sadar Community Center House of Worship Site Plan 212-216, Ernston Road, Parlin Block 444.04, lots 23 through 25 and 28. Yes, sir, for the first one. We need a motion.
Take a motion on that. Second. Any opposed?
We need a roll call. Now, if you were not at the meeting, please abstain your vote. If you were, please provide your voting. Mr. Kandell, Ms. Larmen, Mr. Shaw, Ms. Sataka, Mr. Velosen, oh, he's not here, sorry. Mr. Williams, Councilman Zabrowski, Chairman Tai, thank you. The next resolution is Planning Board Number 25-01 T-Non Auto Service, Inc., 2069, Highway 35, South Amboy Block 428, Lots 1, 2, and 2.01. Need a motion?
Take a motion. All in favor?
We need a roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Kandell, Ms. Larmen, Mr. Shaw, Ms. Sataka, Mr. Williams, Councilman Zabrowski, Chairman Tai. Thank you.
And the last one.
Okay, we have two others, but we need to have the hearings first. I'd like to put on the record, I received a letter dated December 1st, 2025 from Mr. John Wisnewski from Wisnewski and Associates, Attorneys at Law. The letter is regarding preliminary and final site plan application with C variances corner of Carney Road and Route 35 South, Block 277, Lots 1 through 5 and 13 and 14. The letter states, "Dear Ms. McNanny, the above-captured matter is currently scheduled on the Serval Planning Board, the Board December 3rd, 2025 agenda. I had previously forwarded to you the affidavit of service diminishing the required newspaper publication and certified mail return receipt mail notification to the adjourned property owners. On behalf of my client, I am running to request the Board accept jurisdiction of this matter at the aforementioned meeting based upon the affidavit of service and to adjourn this matter until the next available meeting date in January," which that meeting date would be January 21st, 2026. "To the extent that the timeframe within which the Board must act on this matter pursuant to NJSA 40:55D/46C may expire before such action date, the applicant consents to an extension of that time period until January 31st, 2026. Thank you for your attention in this matter." So we would need a motion to accept, to carry. Okay, so the first one is to, for the jurisdiction, Tai? Okay, so we are taking a motion for the jurisdiction and to adjourn and carry with no further notice until January 21st, 2026. May I have a motion to accept that?
We'll have a second. All in favor?
We'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Kandell, Ms. Larmen, Mr. Shaw, Ms. Sataka, Mr. Williams, Councilman Zabrowski, Chairman Tai. Thank you.
Anyone who's here for the application, come back on January 21st.
Everybody good with that?
Next on the agenda, acceptance.
Acceptance of the minutes. I need a motion to accept last month's minutes from September 17th.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Communication agenda.
This evening, we have a letter dated September 9th received from Mr. Carl Kemp Esquire regarding an applicant, Lot 15 Journey Mill LLC, 66 Journey Mill Road, Serval Lots 62, Lot 6, yeah, Lot 62, excuse me, Block 62, Lot 16.15, formerly known as 15 and 16.
Good evening, Board members. Carl Kemp, on behalf of the applicant, as indicated by the Board Secretary, we have received approvals from the Board on September of 2023, memorialized on October 18, 2023 for a self-storage facility on 18 Journey Mill Road. The two-year period protection is run, and we were requesting an extension. We asked for a two-year extension of time to obtain DEP and other outside approvals. Request the extension through October 18, 2024. And that's kind of it in a nutshell. If the Board has any questions, certainly glad to answer them.
Board was provided with a resolution of extension to vote on.
Anybody have any questions of the client? If not, I'll take a motion to...
We're going to take a motion to accept this resolution grants an extension for approvals for preliminary and final major site plan, both variances for Lot 15 Journey Mill LLC for a two-year period. Can I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any opposed?
The roll call vote. Mr. Kandell, Ms. Larmen, Mr. Shaw, Ms. Sataka, Mr. Williams, Councilman Zabrowski, Chairman Tai. Thank you.
Thank you, Board members, and also thanks to the Board Secretary and the Board Attorney for coordinating with me on this matter. Hope everyone has a good holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp.
Moving right along. amended primary and final site plan for...
This evening, right, the first one we'll have on the agenda would be the area in need of redevelopment study. Mainstream, Crossman Avenue, was carried from our November 5th meeting. Block 246, lots 1, 1.02, 1.04, 1.05, 1.06, 1.07, 1.08, 2.02, 2.04, 2.11. Block 247, Lot 1.03, Block 247.02. block two forty-seven point oh-two, lots one point oh-one and one point oh-three, lock two fifty-one, lots, lots one oh-one, two oh-one, and two zero-two.
I, give me one second.
Pull the mic down. Thank you. The plug then? All on our computers.
It's all on your computer, so, okay. Uh-huh, okay.
Okay.
You know what, Beth, to make it the easiest.
Have the whole, sure, no problem. I'll make that bigger. It's easier. Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Vina.
Good evening, Chairman, good evening, Board members. Um, do I have to put my qualifications?
Look, you can know you've been here in the past.
Sure, sure. Uh, I'm Vina Savant. I'm licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. I hold a bachelor's degree in architecture from Bombay University, India, and a dual master's in urban planning and policymaking from NYU. I have been practicing planning since two thousand and four. I currently serve as the Planning Director for Old Bridge Township and also Planner, redevelopment Planner for Sarah. I have testified before numerous municipalities in Essex, Bergen, Sussex, Middlesex, Mammoth County, uh, and I have testified before this board in the past.
I have a acceptance of our credentials. Yes, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you. So under the statutory powers instituted by the state of New Jersey and the Borough Council's resolution that was passed in February, uh, of this year, uh, the, uh, council has requested or authorized the Planning Board to conduct an area investigation study for sixteen of the parcels along the intersection of Crossman Street and Main Street. Uh, there are thirteen parcels that are located on either sides of North Crossman Street, and there are three parcels that are located on the south side of Crossman, uh, Street. Together, these sixteen parcels, um, they comprise or contain two hundred and forty acres of land, and this, this area is quite unique because they are, uh, some of the parcels are on Main Street, but they are zoned industrial. There are some older industries within the, the area that are operational, but some of them are outdated. There are also properties that are large enough and are underutilized. There are sections of the property that have uplands and that have a potential to be redeveloped. Also, it's an inter- uh, interesting intersection because you have a strip mall there, but if, if you often pass by, because I've been passing by that strip mall for years now, and it struggles with vacancy. You'll always see, uh, few stores that are vacant. I was looking at the building department's records. There have been some minor fire incidents or code violations that they have tried to fix. There is a daycare facility, but it does not meet up to the standards, state standards, because now every daycare is supposed to have an outdoor play area. I don't see that in that strip mall. I also noticed that diagonally, diagonally across the street, the Board has approved an application for Vawa. I think it is going through compliance review as we speak. There was a newer, uh, bus depot that was, uh, constructed right behind the site for Vawa. So this area is actually, uh, begging for attention, and I think this is the right time, especially because, um, I was reviewing your master plan, and one of the recommendations of the master plan was that the industrial zone be revisited to evaluate it for additional uses so that it's more lucrative and it attracts, uh, development. Also, the one other thing that was recommended was that we take a look at the floor area ratio and the impervious coverage to find a balance and to see if, uh, the development that is proposed is proportional to the lot sizes. Because if you notice here, in this area itself, there are some parcels that are fairly small, but they are critical because the access drives through, go through these smaller parcels, and then you have larger industrial areas too. There are two parcels in this, um, uh, out of the sixteen which do not qualify for redevelopment, and, uh, I have, I'm recommending that those two be excluded from the area investigation study. One of them is the, uh, Sabert, which is a company that has been, uh, doing food packaging, and they have a clean operation. There was, uh, there were one or two violations on the site, but they were related to fire alarms. There weren't something major that it would qualify for redevelopment. The same way across, diagonally across the street is an, uh, office building or a lab with multiple users in it. The operation is clean, the parking lot is well-maintained, uh, there seem to be no other citations from any of the departments. So that site does not qualify. Um, I have reached out to, uh, the wa- to the utility authorities to make sure there's water and sewer in the areas, and there is within Crossman, uh, Street and Main Street intersection. I have also reached to CME and, uh, received a report from, um, uh, Justin, who has, uh, told me that there are some, uh, improvement, roadway improvements that are in progress at that intersection. There are, there are plans to have sidewalks. So I think this is the right time to evaluate the, the entire area and see if we can come up with a redevelopment plan that encourages development that Sarwood would like to see. Again, this is a non-condemnation plan, which means that the council or the borough will not exercise its power of eminent domain. So in simple language, what it means is if you are within the designated area and you choose not to do anything with your site, nobody can force you out. You still can continue what you're doing. You really don't have to take advantage. This is an add-on for property owners that want to redevelop their site or make it look better or make it more valuable. But, um, if, if they choose not to, nobody really forces them to go through it. Um, four of these parcels, and Beth, you can just keep it on to the area map. Out of the sixteen sites, I, I will first talk about the North Crossman Road. Um, there, there are four parcels that are operated by CMC Steel, the steel plant, and out of which one parcel actually only provides access to the rear side of the property. There are four parcels that are associated with the strip mall that is in the front, and it has its associated parking and access. There are three lots that are owned by JCPNL and have their power infrastructure, but some of these parcels do have portions of developable land that can be still developed, e- even if it is as simple as a parking lot to sup- to be supplemental to an adjacent property. There is one lot that contains Sabert Corporation, a food packaging manufacturer, and then there is one large lot that remains vacant and has a transmission tower and also provides access to one of the rare sites. The southbound side has three parcels, and like I explained before, one parcel, uh, the front portion has an approval for, um, a Vawa. The rear portion has a newly constructed, uh, building, which is the bus depot, and there is one parcel that can see, uh, contains Canfield Technologies, which is a metal manufacturer, and that site is clean. Uh, it is well-maintained, so I'm recommending that be excluded. There is a one, uh, there is one more parcel which is located at the back, and it's kind of tucked, uh, back, but it's, the parking lot is in poor condition, and it has multi-tenants and it has some labs there. Um. Again, the redevelopment and rehabilitation objectives is to bring to productive use vacant and underutilized parcels within the study area. Uh, I think the face of it, when you're on Main Street, it, there, the strip mall I was talking about, it, it is struggling at times. You see a huge turnaround of tenants, you see some vacancy in those stores. So there is an opportunity to redevelop this site and rehabilitate it, um, to enhance economic growth and create new employment opportunities for residents of Servile, foster land uses that align with the borough's master plan and enhance the area compatibility, and that is critical because the master plan recommends it. And, um, then going back to the criterias, uh, there are nine redevelopment criterias. I won't go through each one of them, but, um, I've, I've, I've been in front of the Board before, and I've gone through each one of them before. But, uh, the criterias are decide, designed such that you can assign it based on the structure of the building, the vacancy or underutilization, um, taxation, if you are, um, slacking on your taxes or not paid. When reviewing this study area, I have not paid too much, I have not given too much importance to the taxation part of it because there are tax delinquencies, but again, the study or the data was collected somewhere in June. There were some, uh, applicants that were, or the owners that were still paying off their taxes. So that's not a true da- data. I did not see any tax delinquencies that have been existed for years. So, uh, and then there is criteria D, which specifically talks about absolute, um, obsolete layout or deleterious land uses where something, uh, is, you know, the site circulation is impacted or the parking is impacted, there is inadequate, um, parking as well as site circulation. There is no fencing, there's no landscaping, and it's quite typical when you are in an industrial site, uh, kind of setup, especially with some of the industries that were developed way, uh, like probably three decades ago. So, and then there is criteria H, which is smart growth, which applies to all of, uh, the parcels. We are within the metropolitan planning area, um, PA one, which encourages redevelopment and rehabilitation. So many of the parcels, uh, meet the criteria. Same thing with rehabilitation. Few of the buildings do meet the rehabilitation criteria. And then, right at the last slide, Beth, can you just take them to the last slide? And it's also provided, the last slide is also provided in the report that was circulated, and there is a detailed side-by-side analysis, an information sheet for each of the site, but the last page or the last table summarizes what, um, what is being presented, and it shows every site meeting a criteria. For the Planning Board to designate the area as an area in need of redevelopment, it is critical that a site meets at least one criteria. In this case, uh, the sites that qualify, except for the two meet multiple criteria. So I would recommend that the Board, um, uh, approve the study and make a recommendation to the council to designate this area as in need of redevelopment and rehabilitation. Thank you. Yes.
Make a motion to open to the public? I'll make a motion to open to the public. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Anybody like to speak on this matter from the public? Anybody like to speak on this matter from the public? Come on up.
Hey, you are?
My name is, uh. Good evening, Council members. My name is Lionel Peña. I represent Sabre Corporation, which is on the corner of Main Street and North Crossman. Our interest is to actually, we didn't really get to see the presentation, but our interest is in not only having access for deliveries and everything else that is on Crossman Road, but also the, the, um, stores across the street, the lot, the strip lot, they feed all our employees. We have a hundred and fifty employees in that area that utilizes this, these facilities and these stores and everything else, and we just like to know what the impact is going to be for us. Because we didn't really get that clearly.
Just to answer that, uh, I don't think you will have a negative impact. Uh, the point of the area investigation study is to actually revitalize it or, uh, you know, attract more businesses, not to take away anything. So I understand that there are industries in that area, and the employees need a place to go. Uh, the town, the borough has approved Vawa right across the street. Um, this is just the first step, so there is no plan. This only allows any developer or any property owner to take advantage of the, uh, area designation and redevelop if they want to, but again, uh, I don't believe, or I don't even think as a planner, somebody would want to take commercial use away from Main Street. If anything, they would want to add more, but not take away.
That answer your question?
Yes, Councilman, yes, it does, and that's satisfactory to us.
And we want to keep you happy. You're, you're a great customer for the town.
Thank you, sir. And we're more than happy to have established the home here forty years now in Sarville. Thank you to all.
Oh, thank you for doing business in town. Need a motion?
Close.
Need a motion to close the public portion?
Motion to close.
Second? All in favor? We have any questions on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, just one question for, uh, Ms. Savant. Um, I, I know that this was delayed by a month. I think there was the reason for delaying was the idea, was the purpose of making sure to notify all property owners?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, uh.
Two forty-six, one? Give me one second. I just want to pull the page. Yes, I see it now. I have it here. Yes, so the question? Right, I get that. And see, the beauty of redevelopment is the off-site improvements that you can, uh, make a developer who is coming in work towards, right? So in many of the redevelopment plans that are written, there is always a component for traffic and circulation. And, uh, at, at least the plans that I have written in the past. So when we come to the planning stage of it, we will ensure that that roadway is maintained, and whoever comes to develop that section, because I think that is a great area if wisely planned. It has a great potential, but, uh, in no means will the access be, uh, cut down or not improved. If anything, the roadway will get much better if there is a developer interested because that's what the borough or the redevelopment plan will require him to do as part of a developers agreement. as part of a developer's agreement. No, there is an existing childcare center in the strip mall. And what I was trying to say is, in my past experience, every existing childcare center, they are coming back with a proposal to add an outdoor play area. I don't see that in this because the site is too tight. So maybe this is a chance, if they redevelop, they can replan or redesign it. No problem.
Any other questions from the board? If not, we'll take a motion.
Motion will be to recommend to the governing body that this be the end area. That's correct.
Do I have a second?
You'll call Mr. Candell? Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Taka? Mr. Williams? Councilman Zabrowski?
Yes.
Chairman Tai?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, board members.
Next, next on the agenda is Planning Board 25-05. amended preliminary and final major site plan, Panera and Starbucks Gateway Centers, Block 256.01, Lot 24, Block 256.02, Lot 105.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. For the record, I am Jennifer Philip Smith. I'm an attorney with Gibbons PC. And I am here tonight in behalf of Seville Seaport Associates Urban Renewal. We have two applications on tonight. We're going to start with the one that impacts the Gateway Services area. So as you know, SSA is the master redeveloper for parcel C within the Seville waterfront redevelopment area. And we have been before you numerous times for various site plans for that part of the redevelopment area. And specifically, we've been here for Gateway Services before. This was an approval that was originally granted by the board back through a resolution that was memorialized in January of 2020. That resolution impacted the block that is now known as Block 256.01, Lot 24. And we received approval for six standalone pad sites that we call Gateway Services. We came back in 2023 for an amended approval that tweaked some of the buildings that had been approved and actually pushed one of them onto the adjacent tax lot of Block 257.02, Lot 1.05. We are here again for an amendment. This time, there are three buildings within Gateway Services where we are asking for your approval to change the building slightly. Some of them, the footprints are changing in size by a little bit. For one of the buildings, you'll see it's rotating a bit. And as our civil engineer will explain, the internal driveways are shifting. All in all, however, you've previously approved six pad sites. We are still proposing six pad sites here. We have four people to come testify today. We'll start with Mark Feta, who is on our project team, just to give a short overview of the construction on the site. You'll see that much of the infrastructure has already started. And in fact, one of the buildings in Gateway Services has already started. After Mark, we'll have, we'll have Dan Bush come up, our civil engineer, to just explain the little changes to the footprints. Oh, that'd be great if that started working. So close. We'll have Dan come up. And then after that, we have two architects this evening.
Hey!
That's going to make the presentation a lot better if you could actually see it. So we have two architects this evening. Reason being, we have two buildings where we're going to be showing you the facade improvements and signage. And each building has their own architect for their corporate team. We're going to try and keep it short and sweet, though, as I, as I said, you've seen this before. We did provide public notice and provided copies of that affidavit to the board secretary in advance of this meeting. With that, I'd like to start with our first witness. Yeah, I've just heard it on first.
We good? Okay? So help me God, yes. Thank you.
Mr. Feta, if you could just introduce yourself to the board and explain your role in the project.
Again, my name is Mark Feta. I'm the project executive for the development at Riverton. And I'm accompanied, I have to say, with my team, most especially Kevin Polston, best partner anybody ever had. He and I are living and dying this project every single day. And our entire team here, which is a team. So I'm just representing our whole group.
So, Mr. Feta, before we bring up our experts in engineering and architecture, I was hoping you could provide just some context for the prior approvals here and then where you are with construction.
Certainly. I think this all starts with a statement that we so appreciate the trust that the board put in us in 2019. And eventually, when we presented, and as Jen mentioned before, 2000, early 2020, this site plan was approved. It was very ambitious, and I say ambitious in terms of the content of our site plan submittal. This was intentional. We really wanted to prove the concept of Riverton. And so the contents are both public improvements and private improvements. The private improvements included the Bass Pro building and its attendant parking lot here, Jen, which we'll get to a little bit later in our presentation, second agenda item, I should say. And it included the six building pads that Ms. Smith mentioned, which is the Gateway Services District here. It also included the wet basin that serves the entirety of the southern two-thirds of the site for stormwater management. And most especially, it included the first half of the village, which is mixed-use development, densely developed, multi-story. The western, the eastern portion of that was approved. This all happened before 2019, before, in 2019, before COVID. And what's remarkable, at least from my perspective, is that our insight into the market at that time has held true from that point in time through COVID, through the ensuing years. And what we're here to discuss today with both Bass Pro and the Gateway Services District, and in future, we'll come back for the village. All those uses are coming to pass, and we're really moving the project forward. The, those private, those private development parcels that we just pointed out, they're all stitched together in the master plan by the public improved, the public roads, which is Peter Fisher Boulevard and Riverton Boulevard. And I just wanted to point out those public improvements, which interestingly enough, there's no changes to any of that. So that means that these roads and the utilities within them have, we'll see in the ensuing slides how much of that work has been completed. So Beth, if you could just switch to the next slide? This one here? Yeah. So this is a, a picture of Peter Fisher Boulevard, looking towards Main Street extension. The Panera building is in the foreground, will be in the foreground here. You can't quite see it in this picture, but further into the, outside of the site, or to the edge of the site, I should say, is the Quick Check Building, which is the first building in Gateway Services that is under construction. So you would see that when you come to the site, if you were to visit the site, you'll notice that all the utilities, that this road is paved, the side, the curbing is in, the utilities are all installed, and even the traffic lights are installed. So I'd just point that out for that section of the site. Beth, we'll probably come back to this when we do the Bass Pro. So really, that's, before I transition over to Dan, I wanted to mention that all these public improvements have either been, have been approved and are mostly complete. And in fact, as part of meeting the conditions of our 2019 site plan, we posted the bonds, which are presently in the hands of, of the borough and the borough administrator. They're in the borough's custody, I should say. And also, I think it's interesting to point out that the borough's landscaping and tree recompense requirements have all been satisfied, and we've actually paid the tree recompense. So again, no changes to the public roads, and therefore, all that stands. As does the, was I going to mention here?
I think that's probably it for this one. There's a few questions I have for Bass Pro, but we'll have Mr. Feta come up and, and talk about Bass Pro as part of that application.
Okay, so Dan, you want to come up and talk about the public, the pri, the, back to the, to the first slide, Beth, if you could? Dan's going to talk about the private development areas that we're seeking some minor improvements and minor changes to tonight. Okay?
So before we have our next witness up, is there any questions for Mr. Feta?
Anybody have any questions? Bring up Dan.
Excellent. Thank you, Mark.
Can you hear me now? There we go.
All right. Mr. Bush, I mean, you've been here many times before, but if you could please just summarize your education, experience, and licensure as we're going to be offering you as an expert in the field of civil engineering?
Sure. I have a bachelor of civil engineering from University of Delaware. I'm a senior principal with Colliers Engineering Design. I've had the pleasure of being the civil engineer of record for Riverton and its predecessor for about the last 15 years. I'm obviously intimately familiar with the project and have had the pleasure of testifying before the board multiple times.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So before we begin, just one housekeeping item. I probably should have marked this PDF set that we provided just as Exhibit A1 as our general exhibit set, if that's the way I'd like to do it. That is counting.
Thank you.
Okay, so Exhibit A1 will be in a packet with 15 sheets. And I guess it doesn't have a single date.
That's correct. The PDF title is dated as of today. All right. Thank you. So, Mr. Bush, we are here to talk about the amendments to the Gateway Services area. If you could just start by providing some orientation for the board and then start talking about which buildings that we are changing as part of this application.
Sure. So I'm just going to refer to the, this is Riverton Village Phase 1 that was, as Mark described, approved in 2019. And the Gateway Services area is this portion in the southeast corner of the overall project. Beth, if you could, we have that red.
Whoops.
Yep, perfect. So to try to make it a little easier to see that which has changed, what we did is created this red overlay. So what you're seeing in, in black and white is the plan that was approved two years ago in 2023. And in red, you can see what the changes are. So first thing you can see is that Quick Check, Chick-fil-A, the bank pad, absolutely no changes whatsoever. Then kind of moving from right to left, we have, this is Building 1130, which is now a three-tenant building, which includes a Starbucks with a drive-through. That building is now 6,225 square feet. And previously, so, yeah. And then we have Building 1150, which is the next building to the west. That is now a two-tenant building, same with a, with a drive-through. And that building is now 4,468. Just in general, with all the buildings within Lot 24, which is the east half, the change in square footage, it's a, increases a small amount from 25,050 to 25,543. So very small change in the square footage, slight increase. Couple things just to, just to note are trash enclosures for these, the two buildings, 1130 and 1150, which are located on the, I'll call it the middle, are now been moved to the back of the store. So the fronts of the store is actually face away from Peter Fisher Boulevard. So the service entrances and exits for the employees would bring the trash out are now in the back. So those trash enclosures have been located adjacent to those service entrances. And those are the same enclosures that were approved previously with have a six-foot-high fence or wall around them, completely screening them. And then as we kind of move to the, to the west, we have Lot 1.05, which is the Panera lot. And for Panera, that is now a 3,520-square-foot building. Admittedly, it's hard to see, but fundamentally, what's happened is the building has gone from where it is perpendicular Peter Fisher Boulevard, and we've rotated the building, and it is now parallel to Peter Fisher Boulevard. Drive-through basically goes in the same pattern as, as the prior plan. But most importantly, what it allowed us to do is we pulled the, the spine road that runs east and west through Gateway Services, and we're able to pull it significantly further towards Peter Fisher Boulevard. And, and why that's important, and it's something we've been looking back, all the way going back to 2023, is what it does is it makes the ability to develop the retail in the balance of Lot 1.05, keeping in mind that lot is 200-plus acres and has plenty of development potential. It allows for more, you know, potential development to take place, larger amount of retail to take place on Lot 1.05. So this is a significant improvement in the overall layout with basically the exact same square footage that was previously approved by the board. That's kind of a quick summary of the changes. There's some changes in the, in the parking count. In general, it's still well, we still are well over the required parking for, for the area. Yeah, so that's kind of gives you a general gist of it. The lighting is basically the same. One thing we have spent a fair amount of time in the last two years was, some of the, now that we're under construction, coming up with theming to make this Riverton. So you could kind of see from some of the pictures that Mark put up is, you know, traffic signals are, are black, right? They're, they're black painted. Our, our lights, our sight lights, they're the ones, the same ones that are being constructed in Bass Pro, right? And they're literally physically in there, and you'll see pictures of that when we talk about Bass Pro. We're using that same light within Gateway Services to set this theming of what Riverton is so you know that you've arrived. So, and that lighting is basically the, you know, equivalent lighting levels as we had previously.
All right. So we did receive two comment letters from your professionals. I'd like to start actually with the engineering letter from Morgan Municipal, dated November 11th of 2025, just to touch upon some of the questions or comments from that letter. And we will start with a comment that was in question, I suppose, 1A3, which has to do with the ADA parking spaces. There's a question about whether we need to add a third or whether we're good with two.
Beth, if you could? Okay. So the, 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 what it is, is there's, within the Panera lot or, or the Panera site or adjacent to it, there's 52 parking stalls. For 52 parking stalls, we would normally require, or we do require for that matter, three handicap spaces. The reason there is 52 parking stalls around Panera was simply to provide for circulation in this parking lot. Reality is most, well, I shouldn't say most, 10 or so of those spaces are really for future expansion of Lot 1.05, for the adjacent parking lot that will serve the for the adjacent parking lot that will serve this future retail. So we do not need 52 parking stalls for Panera. So in order to not construct that third handicap space, which would be useless, what the suggestion I would have is that we would simply just not stripe two of the spaces. We would then have 50 spaces, which then only requires the two ADA spaces. And then when we build out the balance of Lot 1.05, we would then stripe the additional two spaces. Because we want to build the curb out and everything, so we don't want to just kind of cut it off. It would be better to pave it out, get the curb in, things of that nature.
Honestly, I don't have an issue even if you stripe it with the acknowledgement that most of the, a lot of the parking is not going to be really utilized for the Panera. So I think the testimony is sufficient. I have no, no issue with that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And there was a question about the EV spaces. That's Question 4 in that same section. Where are the proposed EV make-ready spaces going to be?
So we haven't designated all the EV space locations. So what we, what we've done and what we, well, we agreed with the board in 2023 is that we would comply on a per-lot basis with the, with the EV spaces. Quite frankly, what we've learned in the last two years as we've gone and started construction on Quick Check and are looking at, you know, starting construction of these other buildings, is at a minimum, you would have one EV space per building. I think the lot, I think Lot 24 requires 12. So some buildings will have two, some will have three. But overall, that lot would comply with the, with the EV requirements, so.
There's a question about moving on to traffic and circulation. Now, we previously, back when we had the approval for the entire Phase 1, provided testimony specifically as to traffic. Is there anything that we're doing in this application that deviates from the assumptions that were made concerning, concerning traffic and flow that were previously presented?
No, no. It's the same circulation, circulation, circulation pattern, excuse me, and basically the same square footage as previously.
There were some questions about the bypass lanes that are going to be, or whether there would be bypass lanes for the buildings.
There is bypass lanes, and the comment about adding striping and signage to indicate a bypass lane is certainly appropriate, so yes.
And then how about trash? How would a trash truck get into this site?
So looking at the Starbucks building area, this, there's one-way circulation on the left side going towards Peter Fisher to get to the trash enclosure on the left. And then you would continue circulating around in a clockwise direction to get to the trash enclosure at Starbucks. And then for Panera, there, the trash enclosure is located basically at the entrance to the drive-through. So they're all set up for front-end, front-end loader garbage trucks, so. And we've run traffic, excuse me, truck-turning templates, so we can provide that to the board so they'd have that for their records.
Then there's a comment in 2A1D that sidewalks should be added around trash enclosures. Can you just describe where those would be?
Sure. So it's a little hard to see, but there's a crosswalk, for example, at the rear of the Starbucks, and it's just extending that sidewalk to get to the trash enclosure. It'd be the same thing for the building to the left. And then also, just to kind of go to another comment that I know that's there, is, for example, with Panera, and for that matter with Quick Check, there's a little stub of sidewalk that comes in off of Peter Fisher. And we don't have that for these two buildings in the center here, the Starbucks building and the adjacent building. So we would add that, that sidewalk connection to, to the sidewalk on Peter Fisher with crosswalks there. Makes sense.
And there was a comment about adding some additional signage around the Starbucks about left turns. That's, we'll comply with that request, correct?
Correct, correct.
All right, just a few more. We will get into signage with our architects, so I'm purposely skipping over those comments. On the landscaping design, as, if the board were to approve this as a condition of approval, you could adjust the landscaping design for the buildings?
Correct, correct.
And same thing with the lighting design. There were some comments about just double-checking some areas where it meshes with the Quick Check. That can be double-checked as per resolution compliance, correct?
Yep.
Right. And finally, engineering comments in 11. There's a handful of comments about indoor and outdoor seating. I will defer that to the architect. But then there's comments 2, 3, and 4. 2 and 3 deal with wheel stops and curb ramps. Those will all be verified, correct?
Correct. The, for Panera Bread, there's, there are wheel stops there, which, as was pointed out in the letter, is not desirable. So what we would either do is, one, either remove them completely or replace them with bollards.
And in 3, you'll be able to address the curb ramping, correct?
Correct.
3 and 4. And 5, sorry, then there's a comment about utility roof leaders that could be addressed as part of resolution compliance, correct?
Yep.
All right. There's one other letter to touch upon, and that is the planning letter that was dated November 24th of 2025. There's a handful of comments. Many of them were comments that we've now addressed as part of the engineering, and several I'll defer to the architect. But we have talked about the parking space projection. In all, there were 12 additional spaces added to the Panera section and six taken away in, over, by some of the other buildings, correct?
That's correct.
Those represent a very small portion of the overall number of parking spaces on the site. Is that correct?
Yes, for sure.
And there was one question in B13 about whether the ADA spaces were the correct width.
Correct. So the ADA spaces, you're, for a van-accessible space, the space itself is eight feet wide, and then you have adjacent to it, you have the gored striped-out area that's eight feet wide as well. Or for a non-van-accessible, for a straight car, it's eight feet wide, and then it's a five-foot-gored striped area. That's what the ADA spaces are. The, the discussion of, there is written into the redevelopment plan a provision for compact parking stalls. That was really set up for when we have garages in the, subsequently in, in the, in the village area. So that doesn't, we don't have any compact spaces here with the, within Gateway Services.
And we've addressed a number of the other items, but there was a question about some items that we did not submit for which we should seek waivers, and that's in Comment E1. Two of those items relate to utilities. And can you just very briefly kind of explain here how the utilities were improved, oh, sorry, approved as part of the prior application, and many of them have been installed at this point, correct?
Correct. As Mark's picture indicated, the public infrastructure and the utilities are basically stubbed up on the west side from a stormwater standpoint, all the way up to Gateway Services. And from the other direction, water comes in from Main Street Extension and is stubbed into the site already as is, as is sanitary, telecom, electric, gas.
So those are all the questions that I have for Mr. Bush. We, we do also have two architects we will bring up to testify.
Anybody have any questions of the engineer before we bring up the architect? If not, we'll bring up the architect.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are going to start with Michael Testa. I'm asking to step forward and be sworn in.
Thank you. I do.
All right, Mr. Testa. We are going to be asking for you to be accepted as an expert in the field of architecture. So if you could please introduce yourself to the board and describe your background, education, and licensure.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Michael Testa, graduate of New Jersey Institute of Technology, 1991, with a Bachelor's of Architecture, Licensed Architect in good standing since 1996, principally architectural firm Michael V. Testa Architect in Alba, New Jersey since 2002. I've had the pleasure of testifying all over the state. This is my first time here, and I'm happy about it. Thank you.
Have a second.
So, Mr. Testa, we are still working on you through Exhibit A1 where we've loaded up some of the plans that you have submitted. If you could just generally describe the building that, it's a three-tenant building, but specifically the end unit, which is proposed for a coffee shop.
Yes, Mr. Bush indicated the change in the site plan. The original building footprint was 6,450 square feet. Starbucks, who is the left-side tenant in this area here, as you can see, the front wall has been brought back. So we've reduced that area about 225 square feet. So as Mr. Bush indicated, that building is now 6,225 square feet. The building is going to be retail on the opposite two sides, the right side of the building, approximately 2,100 square feet for each space. That's from the floor plan area. That's pretty an open plan. We don't have any tenants for this other two spaces. And as far as the Starbucks, it will be fit out based on their current prototype. The building was reduced because of ongoing development with prototype development for Starbucks. So right now, they're feeling that a smaller building is more appropriate for them, and they've had us reduce the size of the building back. So that's primarily the main reason why we've done that. The building facade consists of all durable upscale materials. We have brick, metal panels, and wood veneer, which is going to be compatible with the other buildings in the site. The building also has canopies at the front entrance. You can see here in the Starbucks, also the two adjacent retail sides. You have a canopy over the side drive-through. And at the rear of the space here, this is the rear facing Peter Fisher Boulevard with the two entrance doors into the back of the house of the Starbucks. The building height is 19 feet to the main parapet. And then the accent parapets that pop up higher than that is 23 feet. That's pretty much the standard Starbucks elevation concept. All the rooftop units will be screened. As indicated, the canopies will be at the front rear and drive-through, and as well, all four sides of the building will be treated with all the upscale materials, so it'll be visible at all sides, and it'll all have high-end durable building products on all four sides. The building roof will pitch to the rear, which is the Peter Fisher Boulevard side. You could see in the rear elevation, we have scuppers in the back of the elevation which is going to gather the water, bring it down, and tie into the underground storm system Mr. Bush will be designing.
I think we went one too far on the slides. There we go.
There we go. And as you can see here, we're talking about the durable building materials, a brick, metal panel, a wood veneer, which is more of a cementitious panel that looks like wood veneer. You can see scuppers coming down the building. We have accent wall lighting around the perimeter as well as lighting underneath the canopies to accent the overall aesthetics of the building. As far as building signage, we have, they're going to be all wall-mounted internally illuminated signs. We have these green, Starbucks pulls them sirens. So we have two sirens that are 60-inch diameter, and we have one sign that's one foot by approximately 16 to 18 feet. So, and then the adjacent two retail spaces will have 20-foot, 20-square-foot signs located over the entrances of those two stores. But they'll be consistent in style and type as the Starbucks. As far as outdoor, we talked about some outdoor seating. Mr. Bush, site plan shows that recess of the front facade, that's going to create a nice little plaza area out in front, so we anticipate some outdoor seating. The site plan, it shows about 16 seats, which is probably appropriate with some string lighting that will go across and be consistent with other buildings on the site as well. On the site as well, we're going to have some bike racks located. Starbucks welcomes, you know, pedestrian traffic, so that'd be a nice accent for them. Hour of operations for the Starbucks typically 5:30 to 12, 12:00 AM at night. They say 12:00 AM. A lot of times, they don't go that late. It depends on the activity of the store, but that's their typical hours of operation. They have three shifts of people, and then the three shifts consist of five to eight people per shift. Seating inside, typically, they have about 18 seats. That seating consists of some soft seating, like sofas and lounge chairs, tables and chairs, and then just a high top with some high-sub seating. The deliveries will be done around the rear of the store. They're going to be coming after hours, which will be 12:00 AM to 5:00 AM. It's approximately a half-an-hour delivery period at most. It's in and out. Deliveries that come in for dairy come in every day, so you have deliveries every day for dairy, and then for dry goods, it's once a week. Peak hours are typically 7 to 9. And that's, the trash will be taken out on off-peak time. So when it's not peak, it will go out the back door, walk across the sidewalk we just talked about, and dump into the trash corral, which will have general trash and recycling containers located there. The drive-through stacking is typically 12 vehicles. Starbucks breaks it down to seven cars stacked between their two menu boards, and then five cars minimum beyond that. Trying to think, did I miss anything, Jeff?
No, I think that was everything that was on my list. Now, many of those comments that were just made were in reference to questions that were asked in the two reports, so I'm actually not going to go back to those reports. And I have nothing for you, Mr. Testa.
Anybody have any questions of the architect? Say none?
Thank you.
We have one more architect. I'd ask for Mr. Kimball to come up.
I do. Thank you.
Wonderful. You know the drill at this point. If you wouldn't mind just introducing yourself to the board and giving them a little insight into your background, education, and licensure.
Good evening. My name is Jim Kimball. I'm a Licensed Architect working with Colliers Engineering and Design. I received my degree back in 1985, a long, long time ago, from the University of Detroit. I have been a Licensed Architect for 34 years, 34 and a half years. Been licensed to practice in New Jersey for a little over 22 years. I have prior experience with Panera, doing buildings for them all over the country as well as other QSR and retail buildings.
So with that, we would like to offer Mr. Kimball as an expert in the field of architecture.
All in favor, aye?
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
So I'd like to just go over the, the design here of the Panera Bread. This is actually an iteration of their new prototype. So you're going to get their, their new prototype that they've been rolling out across the country since 2022. It's got high, high-upgraded materials and a little bit of a sleek, slick design. So we've got Nietzsche har panels at the entrance elements in an accent Nietzsche har panel across the storefront glazing. And the rest of the building is basically clad in brick veneer and ephes. And what I like about this is we've got the brick veneer base that goes around the whole building, which helps it be maintenance-free, durable. And then we're tucking the ephes to non-traffic areas because ephes tends to get wear and tear a little bit. So it's actually a well-thought-out, designed building. Also, what we've done for this building as well, the trash enclosure is going to be surrounded with macery block and a brick veneer to match the building. With, and the gates will have a white, actually, a off-gray Trex panel gate. Also, in this design, we've got a nice concrete patio with catenary lighting, similar to what Starbucks is going to be doing. And that patio is going to be surrounded with a landscape buffer with local flora. So overall, it's going to be a nice, active, complimentary building to the rest of the development. Talk a little bit about the signage. So the signage is all going to be internally illuminated letters. What, you're, you're not getting the big graphic above the Panera Bread. This, again, this is going to be a little bit more slicker. And so all the letters are going to be internally illuminated. We've got a couple of box signs for drive-through, typical signage for maneuverability and wayfinding on, on the site as well. We've got the signage for the drive-through, menu board, that type of thing. So it's all typical sign package that is, is pretty much trying to follow the plan requirements of minimizing the distraction and the clutter. So a well-thought-out sign package. Building lighting is consistent with the plan as well. We've got some canopy-mounted fixtures over the entrance, the patio string lights that I mentioned, and the typical drive-through illumination. Hours of operation, Monday through Saturday, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Sunday, 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. The maximum number of employees per shift The maximum number of employees per shift, so in the off-peak times, it'll be about four to five people, and then the peak times will be about eight to 12 people. They may even flex to 15, depending, like, this time of year, they'll probably be doing 15 people at the peak time. The drive-through has a queue of nine vehicles. They tend to move pretty quick. So you probably have experienced this, like, everyone's ordering ahead now, especially for this offering, since it's sandwiches. So people order ahead, they get into the drive-through queue, they pick it up and they go. So they tend to move pretty, pretty quick. We also have a bicycle rack planned here at the corner by the entrance element. And the deliveries will happen at the rear by the, using the drive-through lane, and they're only twice a week, and they're going to be at 4:00 a.m., so we confirm that with the Panera folks. Seating, interior seating capacity is 89, and the patio is going to have enough seating for 22 people.
I do not have any further questions for Mr. Kimball.
Anybody have any questions? Anyone have any questions for Mr. Kimball? Not, we'll move on.
Okay, I actually need to recall Mr. Testa just for one moment to clarify one of the statements he made. So Mr. Testa, just if you could clarify the size of the medallions.
Yeah, those medallions that I've referenced as sirens, those are the green round signs I'd indicated as 60 inches. There's an error in my notes, it's six feet in diameter, not 60 inches in diameter. That's five foot is wrong, six foot is correct, okay? Thank you.
Okay, that's all for Mr. Testa. Any other questions? So for this application, that is all I have for the amended preliminary and final major site plan for the changes for the gateway services.
Make sure to open it up. All witnesses. Make motion open. Who have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody from the public like to speak on this matter? Anyone from the public like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
That is all we have in this particular application. We thank you for your time on this one.
You need a motion to approve this part of the...
Do a roll call, it's going to be Mr. Candel?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Taka?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Zabrowski?
Yes.
Chairman Tai?
Presentation, yes.
Approved, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
So the next on our agenda this evening is Planning Board 25-04, amended final major site plan, Bass Pro Shop signage, Block 257 dot 02, Lot 7, and 7.02.
Right. Well, I get to stay up here and keep going. So just for the record on this one, I am still Jennifer Phillips Smith and still with Givens PC, and also here on behalf of the same applicant, Saraville Seaport Associates Urban Renewal. This is also an amended site plan, this one's amended final major site plan, and this has to do with the Bass Pro. As you all know, Bass Pro's been here a number of times for approval. This iteration of the building was approved again in that presentation we made in 2019 with the resolution adopted in January 2020. And then we came back twice in 2023, once to make some adjustments to the building footprint and facade, and the other to make adjustments to the parking lot. As Mr. Feta will fill you in, not to steal his thunder, that building is largely, you know, under construction, and you can see it now, you see the shell. But we are here because we do need to get amended approvals for the sign package. So the testimony will be relatively short. It's, here's the signs that were previously included, here are the new signs that are being proposed, including a pylon sign, which was not part of the last iteration because it was still being designed at that time. We did provide separate notice for this particular application, provided that application to, to the board, and we are not requesting any new or different or additional relief as part of this application under, other than the site plan approval. So with that, Beth, actually, we're going to go back to the first package you had up before, I'm sorry about that.
A1, the gateway?
The gateway one, because we are going to take a look at some of the pictures that we had included in that, and I'll ask Mr. Feta just to come up briefly to talk about the progress on the construction of Bass Pro. Beth, we're going to go all, all the way back to the beginning of that package. There we go. So we'll mark these pictures individually as you go through them, just, and I will pull them out so that it's easier for the record. So we'll, we'll mark the first picture as A1. Mr. Feta, for the board's record, would you like me to have everyone put their credentials back on the record again? Okay. Wonderful. Then, Mr. Feta, I know you previously talked about the progress of construction with relation to gateway services, can you talk a little bit about Bass Pro, please?
Certainly, yeah. This picture is from the northern end of the site, looking down the public road, Riverton Crossing, which again, is largely constructed and paved with all the utilities, as with the Gateway Services District that we just spoke about earlier. There are no changes to the public roads, no changes to the infrastructure, and similarly, there are no third-party approvals, county, DEP, all that stuff was taken care of, satisfied over the last several years. And again, you can see the traffic signalization that's, that's being installed, has been installed. So Beth, if you could move to the next slide. This is actually, we were north of the site just a moment ago on the last slide. Here, we're looking east towards Main Street Extension and the Parkway with the rear side of the Bass Pro building. And once again, utilities entirely constructed. The only thing that we will need to finish up for gateway services and Bass Pro next year, when the weather turns, sidewalks and landscaping.
We'll mark that picture as A2.
Beth, could you transport us to the next picture? Yeah, this is a, this is a great shot, we love this building, it's phenomenal. The, the stone columns and, and the materiality that, you know, really accentuates the Bass Pro brand is being carried over as our architect will speak in a few moments with the pylon sign, which is a very important and integral component of the Bass Pro building and the Bass Pro lease premises. I would point out in this picture as well, this is the corner where the Riverton first is, is evident to the public as you come off of the Parkway. This was manifested in one of our changes several years ago, where we flipped the building, and we thought that this is such an important component, that we put this glass structure, if you will, that is lit up, it's a great architectural feature, and you can see into the building, the grand scale of it, and there's some internal architectural flares, including a boat that will likely be hanging from the ceiling, a hatteras boat, so it just really showcases the Riverton development with that change that we made several years ago. So with that, Jen, I think...
We'll mark that third picture as A3. Excellent. And so now, unless there's questions for Mr. Feta, I will ask our architect, Eric Albers, to come up next to testify. We have brought Mr. Albers in from Missouri, and, because he works with Bass Pro and has been an important part of designing this building and getting it ready for the residents here in Saraville. So, Mr. Albers, if you could, I know you've been here once before in connection with one of the other approvals, but if you could reintroduce yourself to the board and discuss your, your education and background.
Hello, everybody, this is Eric Albers. I graduated from jury university, licensed in the state of Missouri, I've been practicing architecture since 1995. My partner and I started our own firm in 2010, and we've been working Bass Pros for, I've actually been working on Bass Pros since 1997. We've done more than over 4 million square foot of Bass Pros since we've opened our, our firm, and we're licensed in over 20 states. I've been a witness for multiple locations all over the country, and as she stayed, I've also been witness for you guys in 2023.
Motion to accept.
That was on.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you for having me today. As we mentioned, Bass Pro has reevaluated some of their signage, and Bass Pro's process of design is a very fluid process, not only from design to construction documents, and we're always looking for opportunities to improve the project all the way up to the day that the doors open. Signage is no different than that. It's a great reflection of what we do with inside the building. It also is a reflection of the size and grandeur of, of the project. So as we go through that process, we always have to pivot a little bit, depending on what happens interior of the building, to make sure it reflects the outside and the signage and the branding of, of what the products are within the building itself. We also have, of course, the owner's thumbprint, Johnny Morris, is highly involved in every one of his projects, and so as those approvals come, we also pivot the design to make sure that it fits also his and Bass Pro's branding and their concept through all of their projects. So what you're going to see as far as the changes that occurred on this are really a reflection of a lot of those items, not one of them item, but a lot of those items. Front facade is a prime example of that. We changed a couple of the front signs from, from a previous, like, this sign here was, was a redhead sign or a, a send sign. Since then, the worldwide sportsman's area within the building has increased, so we wanted to make sure that that presence was on the outside of the building. So we changed that ascend sign to the, the worldwide sportsman's sign. Of course, those signs are all vindicative of, of the style, and, and so the, the size of those signs can change depending on what the brand is we're showing. In addition to that, on the front facade, we had not allocated signage for the upcoming restaurant and the amenities that the restaurant would have, so we reallocated some of the signage on the front of that building to be allocated for those amenities that will be upcoming within the project that are still under design. On the, on the other side of the building, over here, we reevaluated that one because the facade was very large, we didn't have quite as much signage on there, we needed to spread that facade out a little bit, take advantage of some of the gable forms that we do have. So on that side, we ended up adding an additional traffic sign to the gable right here to start to break up that facade. We also had another redhead sign here on the side gable, which we determined there was already signage for that product in our store on the front of the building and on the back of the building. So Bass Pro decided it would be more vindicative to continue to put one of their Bass Pro logos on the side. That size of a sign is always a little larger than the redhead sign, so again, that's where some of your signage changes in, in square footage are coming from. On the backside of the facade, we ended up taking off some of the, the gables that were on there and kind of redesigning the, the materials on that. When we lost those gables, we needed to reevaluate the signage because those, those forms were not there anymore. So we worked really hard with Bass Pro and with Riverton team to come up with a new design for the materials on that side, to give it a lot more flair still, but that also required us to relook at the size and signage and the changes that you see on there. We also had, on the tracker side, we had one of the older Tracker Boat Centers ribbon signs, which was a little smaller in, in its size. Since then, Tracker's been going through a rebranding scenario as well, so their signs have changed in configuration, and we have upgraded this one to make sure that it's meeting the branding of the Tracker throughout all projects, and this one not being, wanted to be one of those as well. In addition to that, we changed a few signs on the side of the building that faces the highway, where we have all the glass, we wanted to make sure that we, the Mako brand was, was being identified on the outside of the building to reflect what was happening on the inside of the building, so that was another sign change that happened on that facade. So each one of these, we kind of reevaluated not only the sign that was on the building for the product that's being serviced and shown in, in the, the store itself, but also working a little bit with proportions of those to make sure they're filling out the, the building facade properly, I mean, spread out enough to give that vigil, visual appearance and, and elements throughout the facade itself. In addition to that, as, as we spoke, we also added the pylon sign, which is, is very important to the branding of Bass Pro. We, we designed that sign to always mimic the branding of Bass Pro as well, so it'll have the, the larger rock bases, just like the front facade does. We use the same log work and, and materials in there, very, the gable forms that kind of mimic the building itself, so that all of the Bass Pro pieces are cohesive as one through the entire development and really read the brand of Bass Pro. So a lot of the, the small increases you have seen are mainly due to the addition of the pylon sign and reallocation of some of the other signs with the different branding or product that they are, or just filling out better the gable form that's there.
And just for the record, you're, you have been testifying off of a four-page PDF set that we'll mark as A4, which the PDF is labeled as of today's date. And I think if you go one more sheet, there's a picture of the pylon sign.
Correct. And you can see the pylon sign itself, like I said, has the, the same rock forms as below, and, and a lot of the same vernacular feel that you have from the, the building itself. The location of that, I think, is very critical to kind of keep the eye of going into the development and just identifying that you're, you know, you're at Bass Pro.
I do not have any other questions for Mr. Albers, and he's...
Anybody from the board have any questions? We're all satisfied.
I do have Mr. Bush here, if there's questions on the site plan, but the only change in the site plan is there is now a pylon sign. So if you'd like, I can call him up, but otherwise, that, that would conclude our presentation for this evening.
Are you good with that?
Yes.
Fine. Motion open to the public?
Motion open to the public.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Public, anybody from the public like to speak on this matter? Anybody from the public like to speak on this matter? Seeing no one, I'll like, take a motion to close the public.
Vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you again this evening, that is all we have on this amended final site plan for the Bass Pro signage. Thank you.
Need a motion to accept this or deny it?
Motion accept.
Roll call. Mr. Candel?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Taka?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Zabrowski?
Yes.
Chairman Tai?
Yes.
Thank you, you are approved.
Thank you very much, everyone, for your time on both applications, and since we probably won't see you again before the end of the year, happy holidays and happy new year.
Thank you, you too. All right, next on the agenda, old business, new business administrative matters. This evening, we have the approval of the 2026 meeting schedule. I need to receive a motion to approve that schedule.
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will be going into an executive session, but I figure let's do public portion first, and then, so we can delete, yep. Get a motion for public portion?
Motion to open up to the public.
Make a motion.
Second. All in favor, aye. Anyone from the public like to speak? There goes the crew from Row Bass. Everybody, thank you very much, have a nice holiday. Anybody like to speak from the public? If not, I'll make a motion to close. Second. All in favor? Aye. Y'all just have it.
Right, so this evening, we need to authorize going into an executive session, December 3, 2025, whereas the planning board of the Borough of Saraville is authorized pursuant to NJSA 10 colon 4 slash 12 to exclude the public from the portion of this meeting of purposes of discussing specific matters as permitted by NJSA 10 colon slash 12. And whereas the planning board of the Borough of Saraville intends to discuss certain matters... And whereas the Planning Board of the Borough of Saraville intends to discuss certain matters which are deemed confidential pursuant to NJSA 10 colon 4 slash 12 in executive session, whereas at the time of the Planning Board of the Borough of Saraville cannot determine the time when the discussion to be held in executive session will be made to public, but will disclose the minutes of executive session when the need of confidential confidentiality no longer exists. Now therefore to be resolved by the Planning Board of the Borough of Saraville that this meeting shall be adjourned to an executive session, closed session, and the public will be excluded in order that the pub, excuse me, the Planning Board of the Borough of Saraville may discuss the items listed below. Attorney client privilege litigation. I, Beth McNanny, Board Secretary of the Planning Board of the Borough of Saraville and the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, hereby certified this to be true of the action of the Planning Board at its meeting held December 3rd, 2025. May I get a motion? Second.
Second.
Need to do a roll call. That's going to be Mr. Candell. Ms. Larmen. Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Sataka. Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Councilman Zabrowski. Chairman Tai.
Out of closed session? All right, I need a motion to go back into session?
Back into session?
Now that we're in session, I need a motion to adjourn.
Just so everyone knows, our, um, next meeting, um, will be the reorganization meeting, category 7, 2026. Um, everyone who submitted their paperwork and then went over to the mayor's office will...
Motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
All in favor, everyone have a nice holiday. Thank you very much for a great year.